All right, welcome to City Hall. Tonight is November, excuse me, it's actually December the 3rd. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Rick Prather. Then please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Carroll?
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Thanks Ralph. That's gonna make the blooper tape someday, I guarantee ya. Next, we have on our agenda miscellaneous agenda items. And for that, I would like to call on our Chief of Police, Mr. Roger Schrick. Chief?
Thank you. Tonight, Mr. Mayor, I have the pleasure of introducing five new or almost new police officers. I'd like to ask them to stand. And I have them in order with Officer Nun to your right, beginning. It's Officer Damon Nun. He graduated from Cleveland Academy in St. Louis and attended Columbia College. He obtained his law enforcement license from the Missouri Sheriff's Association, Missouri State University at their West Plains Campus in 2009. He was previously employed for four years with Lincoln University Police Department, and he left there with the rank of Police Corporal. Next to him is Jeff Rowland. Jeff graduated from Jeff City High School. He attended Columbia College also, and Mobley Area Community College, and obtained his law enforcement license from the Law Enforcement Training Institute at the University of Missouri. He was previously employed as a Protection Specialist at Target in Columbia, and most recently was a Security Manager at THM Investments in Columbia. In the middle is Lucas Vogel. Lucas graduated from Elias High School. He obtained his Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Columbia College. Mr. Vogel served in active duty with the US Marine Corps from 2004 to 2008. He's currently serving as a Marine Reserve at the rank of Staff Sergeant. He was previously employed as Assistant Manager of the Grocery Section at Hy-Vee. And Lucas will attend the Law Enforcement Training Institute at the University of Missouri, beginning January 6th, 2014. Next to Lucas is Kelly Getler. Ms. Getler is originally from Eldon. She obtained her Bachelor of Arts degree in Criminal Justice Administration from Columbia College. Ms. Getler was previously employed as a Corrections Officer with the Missouri Department of Corrections. She will attend the Law Enforcement Training Institute with Lucas at the University of Missouri, beginning January 6th, 2014. Last but not least is Alicia Schaefer. Alicia, I should say now, Officer Schaefer, is originally from Nebraska. She graduated from Nebraska Wesleyan University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Biochemistry Molecular Biology and a Master's Degree in Forensic Science. Officer Schaefer obtained her law enforcement license from Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Center. She was employed with the Dodge County Sheriff's Office as a Deputy and Canine Handler for approximately six years. Officer Schaefer was most recently employed as a fingerprint technician with the Missouri State Highway Patrol. So, we welcome them, Mayor and Council. Thank you.
Chief, thank you. On behalf of the entire city, welcome. I want to tell you firsthand, we have a great police department and a great city, and we're very glad, not only myself as the Mayor, but the entire Council's proud of you for signing up for duty, and welcome. Give 'em a round of applause.[306.47][306.47](Applause). And unless Chief makes you, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Some have to go back.
I kinda thought that maybe. Thank you. Okay, moving on. No public hearings tonight. Minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. If you'd like to be on one of our boards or commissions, you can do so by going to jeffcitymo.org and filling out an application, or you can call Gail Strope, our HR Director. Next, we have Council Committee Reports. First, Ms. Carrie Carroll and the Admin Committee.
Thank you. The Administration Committee will meet tomorrow morning, Wednesday, December 4th, at 8:00 AM across the hall. And on our agenda, we will discuss residency requirements for city employees, and we will do appointments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Finance Committee, Mr. Sean Schulte. Sean?
Thank you, Mayor. The next Finance Committee meeting is Tuesday, December 24th, 7:30 AM across the hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Public Safety, Rick Bobby Prather.
The next Public Safety meeting will be Thursday, January 2nd, across the hall after the Brown Bagel.
Thank you, Rick. Next, Public Works and Planning, Mr. Bob Scrivner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works and Planning Committee met on November the 21st. We discussed streetlights for High Ciner Road, Vacation Rightway, and Meadows Place, permitting electronic message boards as part of school signage, which is on the agenda tonight. Missouri American Water Bill Recovery and Smart Growth for America Grant, which is also on the agenda tonight. Our next meeting will be Thursday, December the 19th, across the hall, at 7:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any Liaison Reports this evening? All right, seeing none. No appointments myself on this agenda. Number eight says first that we'll go into the Conference Center discussion. However, we have some students here from out of town. So, without further ado, we will move down to B of eight. And at this point in time, we would ask for a motion and a second for Resolution 2013-32.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Drew, would you like to tell us more about that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request from Councilwoman Carroll, and I think her request comes from the kids that are here this morning. Essentially, it calls for the City Council to encourage the House Majority Caucus to adopt a policy to prohibit smoking in the offices of its members. And there's a lot of the whereas's that describe why, and other cities that have joined. But I suppose it might be best if we're gonna allow them to speak to maybe make their own case for it. It was all I had. I don't know if you had the intention of letting them say their piece?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. For the record, if you could please state your name, and you can just say you're from Asheville, or you don't say your actual home address, but...
Okay. My name's Andy Rodriguez. I'm from Mokane. Good evening, Jefferson City Council. Thank you for letting us speak before you tonight, and a special thank you to Carrie Carroll for helping to make our voices heard. My name is Andy Rodriguez, and this is Alicia Kiminoff. We are from South Calway Smokebusters, and tonight, we are asking you to sign a resolution for the state Capitol here in Jefferson City to be smoke-free. Included in your council packets is the resolution for your review. We want to clear the air because Missouri is one of only 10 states that still allows smoking in their Capitol Building. Seven of the eight bordering states have smoke-free capitals, including Iowa, Kansas, Illinois, Nebraska, Oklahoma, Arkansas, and Tennessee. On a personal level, I'm a cross-country runner, and I know, you know, whenever I run around cigarette smoke, I inhale it, and that never ends up really well. I usually end up coughing, or, you know, at the very least, I don't necessarily want to keep breathing in the cigarette smoke, so I'll kinda hold my breath a little bit. And that's not good as a runner. It doesn't really agitate any, like, health-related issues. I don't have any health-related issues that would be agitated by cigarette smoke, though. Like, my brother, who also does cross-country with me, he has asthma, and I've seen him become, like, you know, go into little asthma fits and that kinda thing, and have to hit his inhaler whenever he's around cigarette smoke. Our parents used to smoke, and I saw how that affected him, but I think lately, due to my efforts and his efforts, they've quit smoking. My mom quit smoking in August, and my dad quit smoking in last month. Yeah, last month. So, I just think, you know, that's partially due to our efforts, and this is kinda something that really matters to me.
My name is Alicia Kiminoff, and I'm from Fulton. We would also like to clear the air because secondhand smoke has been determined to be a health hazard by the US Surgeon General, and even a short time exposed to secondhand smoke can cause immediate adverse effect on the cardiovascular, heart, blood, and vascular systems. Secondhand smoke has over 7,000 different chemicals, and every time someone lights up, they are exposed to these chemicals. Last year, over 470,000 people visited the Capitol Museum, 30,000 being schoolchildren on guided tours. Many of these groups have students who have asthma and could easily trigger an asthma attack. Personally, I recently attended Missouri Youth and Government, and at this convention that I've attended for the past five years, we spend a lot of time in the Capitol Building. As you may know, legislators are allowed to smoke in their offices, but smoke does not respect the boundaries of office walls or doors. This allows smoke to be exposed in common areas like hallways. Allowing smoking in our Capitol Building sets a bad example for these kids who will go on to become leaders of their communities. Having the opportunity to participate in this wonderful organization, I've had the opportunity to see many beautiful nooks and crannies of the Capitol that many people are unable to see. And I think we should keep it as beautiful as it should be. For these reasons, the South Calway Smokebusters are asking you to pass this resolution. By signing onto this resolution, it sends an important message that our state Capitol, the People's Building, should be smoke-free. Thank you for providing a healthier community for all citizens of Jefferson City. It's time to expand that opportunity to all of those working and visiting the state Capitol. We will now read the resolution.
Hi. My name is Abigail Luber, and I'm from Sibley-Graham, and we would like to read the resolution. Whereas, secondhand smoke has been determined to be a health hazard by recognized eminent health authorities, including the US Surgeon General, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the US Environmental Protection Agency.
Whereas, Jefferson City, as well as the communities of Baldwin, Brentwood, Chillicothe, Clayton, Columbia, Creve Court, Excelsior Springs, Fulton, Hannibal, Independence, Kansas City, Kirkwood, Lake St. Louis, Lee's Summit, Liberty, Maryville, North Kansas City, O'Fallon, Rolla, Sedalia, Springfield, Warrensburg, and Washington, have recognized secondhand smoke as a public health hazard and have enacted ordinances to prohibit smoking in public places and workplaces.
Whereas, the US Surgeon General has concluded that even a short time exposure to secondhand smoke can cause an immediate adverse effect on the cardiovascular system and interferes with normal functioning of the heart, blood, and vascular systems in ways that include the risk of heart attack. It's a significant risk, health risk, for lung cancer, stroke, emphysema, asthma, and other diseases, and that the scientific evidence indicates that there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke.
Whereas, our community citizens that work in our state Capitol Building deserve no less courtesy and accommodation of smoke-free indoor air at their workplace, as do our citizens that work in all other workplaces in our city.
Whereas, tourists, constituents, and other visitors of our city are provided smoke-free indoor air in every public place in our city, with the sole exception of the state Capitol Building.
Whereas, tens of thousands of schoolchildren visit the state Capitol Building every year, and whose perception of how our government works may be influenced by the observed actions of our elected representatives during these visits.
Whereas, Missouri's youth smoking rate is among the highest in the nation, and published studies have found that smoke-free policies are an important factor in reducing youth smoking rates and in protecting youth from health effects from secondhand exposure.
Whereas, effective January 10th, 2013, the House Minority Caucus adopted a policy prohibiting smoking in offices of all its members, and as of mid-February, the House Majority Caucus adopted a policy allowing its members to continue to smoke in their offices, but to be conscious and respectful of others.
Whereas, exposing other people to secondhand smoke is inherently contrary to being conscientious and respectful to their health and well-being.
Whereas, secondhand smoke will not remain contained in an office, but will infiltrate into other offices and into common areas. And the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers have concluded there is no ventilation, air cleaning, or air filtration technology available that would sufficiently remove the toxins of secondhand smoke from the air.
Whereas, a number of products are commercially available that can provide the needed dosage of nicotine to smokers without polluting the air.
Whereas, a smoke-free policy for the state Capitol Buildings is already the norm for 41 other states, including seven of Missouri's eight border states. Now, therefore, the City Council for the City of Jefferson encourages the House Majority Caucus to adopt a policy to prohibit smoking within the offices of its members, for the sake of the health of our citizens that work in the Capitol Building, for visiting constituents, for tourists, and for our children.
Thank you, guys, for reading that. Very good. We'll open the floor to discussion and debate. Ralph?
Is this one of your projects that you developed? How did you come to take on this as a project?
Well, the Jefferson City SAD approached us about, they couldn't be here tonight unfortunately, but they approached us about this concern, and, you know, they kinda wanted to see if other counties around Jeff City supported this idea. And since we at South Calway have been working to make our school tobacco-free, we actually just got our whole entire campus completely tobacco-free, including smoke-free. Just, when was that, like, a couple months ago? Yeah, it'll go into effect for the next school year. So, they knew that we would probably stand behind them, and we did, and so, that's why we're here tonight.
Some of these other locations, do you travel there, or are there other groups like yours that address those communities? For example, Columbia or Excelsior Springs.
There are other groups. No, we didn't travel there. It was other groups that did that part.
Groups similar to yours?
Yes.
Missouri Youth and Government? Well, I congratulate you on your project, and I believe in your cause, and will this resolution, will it end up at the Capitol, being delivered to anybody? What happens to this resolution after we pass it?
Um...
If I can. And I'm Stan Cowan. I live in Jefferson City, live in Ward 3. And since this is, the House Minority Caucus has already addressed this, adopted a policy, the Majority Caucus needs to come up to the plate, too. So, this would be delivered to the leader of the House Majority Caucus, which is Representative John Deal.
Well, do you think that around the state, the groups from around the state, will they converge on the Capitol to make that presentation, you think?
We do have a Capitol Day scheduled in early February, and it is anticipated that they will make a formal presentation at that time.
Wow, congratulations.
So, the students will be going to the Capitol themselves, is that correct?
There'll be students from across the state that are converging.
All right, thanks, Stan. Rick?
Who are we missing from the other night that couldn't be here tonight? I know there was a big group that was here, but they obviously aren't able to introduce themselves, so, do you know who was there from last night, the other meeting, or...
There were a few people that couldn't make it because of other predicaments that they didn't have. Last night, they had basketball games and work schedules, so, it's just, tonight wasn't convenient for all of us, but we all tried to get here and work together on this.
Yeah, it's okay. We're not used to Tuesdays either.[1184.83][1184.83](Laughter). Tuesday's kind of our off night normally. It's a recovery night for some of us. Bob?
So, your group solicited the participation, Stan, of the students. Are you the one behind this?
Actually, I saw a newspaper article about these students getting the policy, campus policy for their school, and I addressed one of our youth advocate coordinators about the possibility, since Jefferson City is within the House District that these students are in for one of Jefferson City's three state representatives. If they had an interest, and they jumped at the chance, they saw this as one more natural extension of what they've already done for their school campus.
But you initiated it.
I can, yes.
Okay. And you wrote the resolution?
If I may?
Sure. Another Jeff City resolution.
My name is Victoria Warren, and I live in Jefferson City. I'm in Ward 5. And it is my understanding that actually, there's a group of young people from the state of Missouri who were selected to receive a national award from the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids. And these young people and others were in Jefferson City for their Capitol Days last year. And in the Capitol Days, they, you know, learned that there was smoking going on in the Capitol, and that really bothered them. And so, this is really, even though, you know, Stan kinda has helped and others have helped, this is really a young people's campaign, that they took it on. They decided that this was gonna be their mission for this year and the next year, to try to convince our legislature to make the Capitol state free, and they, you know, want our Council to be part of that, sending that message.
All right, any other debate by Council? Carrie?
Thank you, and I appreciate you all coming twice, and not only coming, but sitting through two hours of Conference Center debate at the last meeting. So, it's very nice of you even to want to come back. And of course, the issue of smoke-free is definitely a passion of mine, but I just think anything that students get so interested, involved in, that they want to come to our City Council meeting and present, is just wonderful, and I wish we could get more students involved in making a difference, because you're our future leaders. And it's exciting to see that you care enough about policy and how to change that, and coming to address the Council, and knowing that a resolution is simply a suggestion. It's something that we would like to see happen. It doesn't change a policy, but it's kind of a suggestion to the state lawmakers. So, it's nice that you are going through that process and learning about that now. So, I really appreciate it. I do believe in the cause. I think even if you could say solely for the fact that our city voters voted in favor of a smoke-free city, and every workplace is smoke-free other than the Capitol, like you mentioned in your resolution, it's the only place. And if I didn't make it clear when I sent out the resolution, you kind of brought it through me, but truly, I'm just funneling that through to the entire Council. I didn't help draft it. I didn't help with anything other than saying, yes, let me get you on the agenda. But the fact that a student did note that when they were at the Capitol, it came from students being there and noticing, wow, you can smoke in the Capitol, let's do something about that. And now, they've worked through Stan and through your groups, and through the Jefferson City group that couldn't be here tonight to work together, and other groups across the state. So, I think it's wonderful that it came from students. But the fact that Jefferson City has a smoke-free policy, but it doesn't apply to our Capitol Building, I think it should, and I'm proud of you for coming forward and asking us to pass this resolution, and I hope it passes, and hopefully, we'll send a signal and a message that the Council cares. It is Jefferson City. It is our city. And that others around the state, this is the state's Capitol, that you all care, and students care enough to come forward and do this. So, thank you very much.
Thanks again for coming forward. If you'd like to have a seat, we're gonna have a debate now, so... Yes, sir.
Before you leave, I have one question for you. Have you had the opportunity to speak to your state representative about this? Yeah, okay. What about the students? Have you all had a chance to sit down and talk to their state representative?
Thank you, Carlos. Drew, I have a question. Can you tell me, or explain to the Council, I don't know if we've seen a resolution that directs our Capitol, per se. What happens, this is passed, what happens next?
You know, I can't recall one similar to this before in my time. Phyllis Smith, I'm not sure. Won't put her on the spot. But presumably, what I would've thought we would do probably is to mail it to the House Majority Leader for their perusal, but maybe we get together with them and do that all at once with the other ones. Might be a better route to go. You know, certainly, the Council can opine on whatever they like, and they make their statements through resolution. I can't recall something exactly like this before, but I'm sure it's happened.
Okay. All right, debate? Ken?
I certainly appreciate the students bringing it forward. Alicia here is just reflective of close to 900 young people that I personally get to work with through Youth and Government every year. You know, there's a lot of activity that takes place in the Capitol Building, especially off-session. You know, she was part of a group three weeks ago that had 460 students using the Capitol Building. We have another 430 using the Capitol Building starting Thursday with Youth and Government. And they experience it, and I think that these handful of young people here tonight are very reflective of thousands of young people in our state that care about these issues. I'm thrilled that they've taken this effort and sought a formal process to bring this forward. And, you know, we could probably debate about the impact or effectiveness of a resolution, but, you know, that's kind of what we have. It provides them the tool. I'm excited that they have some sort of day at the Capitol in early February. That'll be a great chance for them to promote their efforts and their cause, and I suspect that a lot of times, there's people in the public that are probably surprised that smoking is still permitted in certain offices at the Capitol Building. Especially in 2013, that's still the case. So, I'm certainly supportive of the resolution. I think it's fantastic they've brought it forward. I'm never, you know, young people never cease to amaze me with what they're willing to do, the causes they take on, and my guess is that these students will, this is just the beginning of how hard they're gonna work for this effort to see it through. So, thank you all for being here.
Further debate? Bob?
I guess, I appreciate the young people doing it as well. What I don't appreciate is that a group that Stan represents has, as he by his own words said, solicited their participation. I think if he wants to influence the legislature to change their rules, then he should go and lobby the legislature. And I personally don't smoke. I don't personally care to be around secondhand smoke, but I don't see it as our place to be telling the state legislature what rules they're gonna operate under. And I think that if there, in fact, is there a large group, thousands, as you've said, Ken, that feel that way, then I feel they should show up at the Capitol and make their influence known at the Capitol. And so, while I don't care to smoke, and I don't necessarily want to be around secondhand smoke, I'm not prepared to support a resolution that wasn't written by us. It was written by an outside group that has an agenda, and I'm not gonna be a part of advancing their agenda. I'll vote against it.
Further debate?
Well, after listening to Councilwoman Carroll, I get the impression that if I vote in favor of this, it is intended to send a message to the state Capitol that they should fall under our city ordinance, and I don't believe that's correct. I don't think they should. So, maybe, I don't know that that's the message I want to send. That's all.
Further debate? Carrie?
I think as a Council, we should encourage our lawmakers to follow our city laws. Even though they don't have to, I think it should be encouraged. Kind of embarrassed that they don't, and we have people from all over the state coming here, especially schoolchildren, that are watching people in the Capitol not following our city laws. And sure, they don't have to, but I think it's a wrong message to send. I think they absolutely should, and I really do think that's our place to encourage it. We're not making a decision either way. We're simply encouraging and truly bringing the message that these kids have brought forward. And sure, they have people like Stan, and they have teachers and mentors. They have to. They're in school. They can't just come like citizens do and say, hey, I'm a, let's form a group. I mean, they are schoolchildren with other school groups, and I believe... And I believe they have teachers and others in the community that guide them and help them and get them here. And I think that's a normal process for any school group. But it is coming from the heart of these students here.
Further debate? Seeing none, roll call please.
Branch?
No.
Bray?
No.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
No.
Motion passes. Congratulations, guys. Okay, next on our agenda, I'm gonna move real quick to the Kevin Minehart Award and then Drew.
B.C. Thank you, Mayor. The Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was created to recognize a citizen volunteer on a city board, committee, or commission who demonstrates devotion to public service, excellence in professionalism, enthusiasm, and conduct which reflects the highest ideals of citizenship. We all know that we have many deserving volunteers on our boards, committees, and commissions of this award. But we are right now taking nominations. We've sent the nomination form out. I have copies if anybody would like one. But we're taking nominations through this Friday to select our first recipient of the Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service. So I just wanted to remind everybody about it.
All right, Gail, thank you very much. Any questions for Gail? Okay, moving back to the man of the hour, number eight A, Conference Center. Haven't said that word in a little while in these chambers, Drew. Drew, our interim city administrator and of course, city counselor. Welcome back, sir.
Well, thank you. And I know you're all tired about talking about other business, so let's get back to the Conference Center. Couple of things here I wanted to bring to your attention, kind of the immediate next steps we've got. Got on this list whether or not we wanna engage a consultant similar to Charles Johnson or perhaps Charles Johnson to help us through this stage. The second issue is the stipend. And the third issue is whether we wanna hire an outside attorney. So if I can deal with two and three first, real fast, three on the outside attorney, I don't think you need if you do the consultant. Just the purpose really is that doing this job and the city administrator and city attorney job, we've, we're pretty tight on time. And while we can, of course, do this overtime, the council may have a desire to move a bit faster than we might be able to do until you hire a permanent city administrator. However, if you end up hiring a consultant, I think that will serve the purpose of kind of taking the lead in getting some of this information from the developers, free up some time so I can work on the contracts and such. So really, attorney is only, we only need to talk about if you decide not to do the consultant. The stipend issue, as you'll recall, in the RFP, it talked about a stipend being available for reimbursable costs or the costs that are associated, the developer had associated with providing us the information for these final and best proposals and now going forward. I had a chance, an opportunity to speak with Joe Bednar, who's a local attorney, has been hired by the Earharts to assist them with this process. And he'd asked for a bit more time before he wanted to convey a number that they are looking at for a stipend, to give him an opportunity to talk with his client a little bit. So, so long as the council is okay with kind of punting on that, maybe we don't need an answer today. Because what I'd really hoped to do was to bring you the number they were asking for as kind of a, that, of course, is not required, incumbent on you to make the decision based on their number, but it might help you get an idea of where their head's at. And then the farmers gave me an answer, which is basically, they've already spent probably all the money they're gonna need to. So all they would ask for is whatever amount that the Earharts get. So with that, maybe I'll go back to the consultant issue. The question here is, do we want the consultant to assist us going forward? The value that they bring, that the consultant would bring, of course, is, or we want out of a consultant, I think, is the expertise to know what issues we need to address, expertise to look at some of their, their numbers again as they put forward, what their costs are, so that we can have someone who's got on a national scale an understanding of how those things work. And kind of as I put in an email to you guys, you know, quote a brilliant councilman, you know, we don't know what we don't know. So we don't know what we need to know until we get there. Now certainly as staff, if you direct, you know, we're not ready to do that. We'll go forward as we do. But I do think there's a lot of value in that. So a sub-part to that then is if you get past that initial question of, if your answer is, yes, we wanna go with a consultant, then part two of that is, do we want to go with a Johnson again or do another RFP? In my mind, Johnson makes a lot of sense because he's already, he would hit the ground running. He's already familiar with the players, already familiar with the proposals. Now, I'd seen an email today about questioning maybe whether or not he had quite enough experience in actual hotel design and such. I think if you take a look at his resume, I would probably answer that he probably does, but I guess that's for y'all to decide, of course. If we do the RFP, we can certainly do that immediately. Cost, I'm not real sure about, you know, he's given us some soft numbers, but I'd rather not, and I think I've let you all know what that is. But I hate to commit, I'm hopeful we could get a lower number. That amount would, unless you dictate otherwise, would come out of lodging tax. Again, we've got about $300,000 pushing it to the limit of money that would be available for these things and any other costs that we might have that won't affect our ability to bond out that $9 million. Now, probably Bill's face is getting red because those things fluctuate depending on the bond market. You know, that could go up or down. It could be better, it could be worse. But there is some flex money in there for us to deal with these kind of costs. So ideally, I guess I'd be interested for a motion to go forward with a consultant and then a motion to move forward with Johnson or an RFP. If you all need additional time, certainly we can set up work sessions. They're gonna be hard in December, so I kinda hate to see us wait till January to make a decision. But, you know, we've got the 16th available as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions you all have. I can talk more if you like about the values or no value of having a consultant.
What, and council and Drew, just so you know, I kinda plan on running at least this portion, just like it was a work session. If the audience doesn't understand that, a lot of times next door at our work session, we will actually ask staff, in this case, just like I'm going to do, Drew, what direction do you want the council to give you? What type of motion are you looking for right now on this subject?
Well, I guess one of three motions I suppose would be preferable. One is to move forward with a consultant under an RFP process. Another possible is to move forward with Johnson as our consultant to engage in contract negotiations, I guess is what you should say. Which then we would come back with a contract probably by the 16th. Or to say that we don't wanna move forward with a consultant and we want staff to go forward.
I guess the best way to get that started is, who wants to make what motion? Or Drew, do you wanna put one on the table and see if there's a first and second?
Well, I guess my, my advice would be we move forward with negotiating with Johnson, but I respect that maybe y'all wanna see what else is out there.
Is there a motion to do so? Bob, is there a motion? We have to have a motion first.
No.
Okay. Carrie? No? Okay. Next?
Would we like to field some questions first? Maybe we can figure out what the motion on me?
I think maybe we ought to do that. Bob?
My question is, would you briefly, you don't have to go into great detail, but give me a scenario again of what the consultant, what you expect from the consultant?
Well, I think there's maybe three categories. The first is, I think he would tell us what the next five or six steps are and give us reasonable timeframes to accomplish those. So whereas I kinda see jumping in and negotiating the contract with all these points therein, he might say we need to focus on one or two areas first and hammer those out and the rest of the things can wait. He might give you some advice on whether or not a stipend is appropriate or how much the stipend is. So initially, I think he tells us where to go from here. Secondly, the value he has is, is in, as the developers propose numbers, again, as they generally did in the best and finals, but I think we're looking for a lot more specificity now on those real building costs, real design costs, real economic incentives, costs, and values. We want that person to be able to look and say, you know, those numbers are correct. Your construction costs are too high. Your architect's plan is reasonable, but, you know, could we curve that down a little? So kind of using him to educate and be a hammer as well. If there was a third process now, I've forgotten. But those are the, kind of the things that I think they bring to the table.
A huge unanswered question that I think exists is, we have two proposals right now. One has a projected cost of an $18 million conference center. The other one has a projected cost of a $9 million conference center. Those two, that, I mean, that's a chasm between those two proposals. And there's, there's no specific, there's no particulars.
That, that word. It's Tuesday.
That, that will lead us to understand just what we're getting for $9 million or what we're getting for $18 million. There's, there's no, and I would hope that maybe a consultant could delve into those two and, and be able to shed some light on exactly what we're getting and whether we in fact need an $18 million conference center, if it is being overbuilt compared to what we expect. And certainly whether or not a $9 million is being underbuilt. So I would hope that that, that we could rely on the consultant to provide that insight for us.
I think that, that is correct. I'll just take the one step farther than what I've asked both of them to do is give us a rendering of that architect's design and tell us what the, you know, show us what this money's gonna buy us now. Could the architect's design be not quite, you know, stretching it one way or the other, it could. And that's some value that the, unless we go out and hire our own architect to kind of double-check their math. You know, that's what we're hoping to get from the developer. And if I could say one other thing, one thing I don't think we're looking for in the developer in this stage is to give us advice on which one's better. That's kind of, that ship has sailed. I think-
Consultant, you mean?
The consultant. I'm sorry, whatever I said. But yes, so that's kind of not what we're looking for. We're gonna, we will use him to bring you two contracts and then you'll decide. I don't think at that point, we're asking him to say which one's better.
At what point do we get an idea, a vision of exactly what the furnishings are, exactly what the level of trim, the level of ornamentation, if you will, the quality of the product? When do we learn that?
Well, unless the council desires something else, you'll learn that when we bring back the two con, well, ultimately, you'll learn that when we bring the two proposals back to you, the two contracts back to you. They'll have all that stuff in it. That's my vision. So you'll have two fully formed contracts with all these details answered. Now, a concept I've heard thrown around is maybe setting some benchmarks out there so the council's kind of aware of how much progress we're at. And maybe at one of those earlier steps, you can make a decision by then to say, well, you know what? That one's not going far enough. So that's a potential concept out there.
Is there a point where we get to, almost like building your home or remodeling your home and picking out the furnishings? Is there some point in time where we get to have input as to what the level of furnishings are going to be? And, and help make that judgment as to whether a $15,000 conference, or $15 million conference center is appropriate as opposed to $18?
Bob, if I could, would you, are you trying to point out basically, when could we see the difference between this type of furnishings and this type of furnishings?
Yes.
And I'm assuming someone could say, this is what, this is what was done in Blue Springs and it was this price. This was done in Chesterfield or wherever, that kind of thing?
Yeah, well-
Because obviously something, it's something we don't necessarily-
Does $18 million buy you mahogany and, and $9 million buy you aluminum? You know, I don't know. What, what's the difference?
Right, and we'll have to, we'll certainly come to that. For the amount of money we're putting into it, we probably don't get to pick out the drapes and such. But, you know, to understand the value difference of what we're giving up, I think is critical for the council to know. But, you know, as I said, though, unless the council has a different vision, which of course we'll do, I would think all those questions will be answered kind of at the same time at the end game when we bring it all back to you. Kind of what I envision is, I mean, I've already kind of got the outline of my contract written and I'm working on it, is, you know, we'll have some attachments of renderings, values, you know, the clauses in the bankruptcy and all this other stuff. How much the tip, how much the actual cost of construction will be. And with, which I hope will answer your questions about what are we getting for our value. So it may, we can tweak it some to have exactly that type of mahogany versus other value. I don't know that you'll, dollar for dollar, but yeah, at some point is the answer.
Carrie, did you have a comment a year after Bob, I think?
But I, I agree that there could be a need for a continued consultant work and I bet the council might think that way. I think none of us wanting to make a motion, though, is kind of a clear, it's a, it clearly says that we aren't ready tonight, of course. This is really sort of the first we've heard about our next steps and like, like you said-
I have a question, Drew. When did you send out your email on, on what we were gonna talk about tonight? Was that about a week and a half ago?
I'm not sure. It was-
Prior to Thanksgiving?
Initially, yeah, I sent out an initial email about it. But certainly limited description.
Am I, I have the floor again? Okay. That I think we do need a work session, like you mentioned. Although this is an appropriate time to begin the discussions. I could see us having maybe, I don't know what our scheduling looks like and of course, it's the holidays. But if we could maybe put it on a work session where we could discuss what we would want from the consultant. You brought up a few good points. And there's points like, well, what would that cost for a consultant and who might that be? And I do have some concerns. I know you mentioned that Charles makes the most sense because he's got background. But some of the background he has, I'm kind of concerned that there's some places we might be lacking that I look at, look to him and say, I'd like to almost say to him, well, there's certain areas and I'm, maybe I'm the only one or maybe not. I think I read in some emails today that there are some other concerns that some of us have that, of some information that maybe hasn't, that we don't have in front of us that maybe we should, or things that are sort of lacking with Charles. And maybe he's the one and maybe he's not. But it seems like that might be a work session discussion to do the pros and cons of him versus others. And I would say too, we'll be hiring a city administrator soon and I don't know where the timeline is, but it might be helpful in our mind to know what that timeline is. Because if we're going to bring in a consultant, we want the city administrator to be working with him. You said it's a lot for you right now to take on all these positions and we wanna be working closely as a council. But that is a piece of this puzzle. So I would suggest a work session.
I have a question, Drew. A work session in two weeks that would put us right back here again, asking whether or not we should hire a consultant. Couldn't we maybe try to decide tonight as a council whether or not we want a consultant? And if we do, maybe the more prudent part of time, I guess, would be to maybe instruct staff to go out for RFP. And then when we had a work session or whenever we did talk about that, you'd know exactly, how long would it take to get an RFP out and back?
Bill's holding up a finger.
He's looking for the galley.
Two or one?
One week or two?
Three, 30 days?
30 days.
30 days.
Okay. So with that being said, if you want a consultant, I'd ask the, I'd ask the council to vote on this tonight and not wait till the 16th, which would basically be January 16th until you even heard anything back. And then at least you'd have all the cards in front of you. And I'm assuming that, Drew, what do you think of that?
Well, I'd say there's no harm in it. You know, if we went out for an RFP, certainly Johnson would apply. You could value him against others. It would then give the council a chance to mold this over a bit more. That would put us into January. You know, if we typically do our work sessions on the fourth Monday, we should be able to get it back, give you all a chance to think about it. So, you know, there's no detriment in that. There's, there's no cost in it. There's nominal costs, there's some advertising costs. But, you know, you're not committing yourself to a consultant if we do the RFP.
Right, exactly. You'd still have the chance not to vote for an RFP later, right? Mr. Schulte?
Drew, at this point, is either developer willing to move forward on anything without a stipend? And then I have a follow-up after you answer that.
I'm gonna say yes for now. The farmers believe they're kind of almost fully formed or it's just gonna be a modification of it. So they've got, I've given, you've all seen my emails to them, so I've tasked them with a dozen things to do and they appear willing to do those. I think the Earharts are in the same boat now. I got a little bit earlier on, a feeling that maybe they weren't, they wanted to wait to see on the stipend. But since Mr. Bednar is on board, he's already working on those questions too. So I think if you, if you do put this off till January, they will still be working on some of those things. So I don't think work will stop. But I don't know how far either party will go any further without a stipend. It may be all the way. I don't know yet.
Okay. I guess I'm not prepared to authorize a consultant until we have those questions answered that we've already asked. A couple of things come to mind. I know specifically, we told one developer that a Missouri 353 is off the table. Uh, one developer is proposing a Missouri three fifty-three. So if we give them the same instructions that that's off the table, where are they at? Are, are they still in the game or are they not? And I think we asked for a, a certain level of detail in the RFP Phase Two that we did not get particularly from one developer. Some of the, the questions that have been asked tonight about floor plans, maybe an extra elevation, we didn't get those. And I think, uh, I'm not willing to authorize a, a consultant until we get that information at a minimum that was asked as a part of Phase Two. And you could say, well, we're past Phase Two. Well, maybe we are, but they still owe that information. You know, what's the outcome of discussions with the state? And so the, the questions that you referred to, that you submitted to each developer in an email, I would like to see the answers to those before we authorize a, a consultant. Thanks.
Is that something you can do, Drew, you think? I mean, I'm not, I don't, I forget the whole, all of the questions.
Sure. I mean, well, I mean, I'm waiting on their replies now. I, I, both developers indicated they're working on it.
Rick?
I agree with Councilman Shulte's evaluation and I'd like to add to that. There are not only questions that you might have posed to those developers that, but as a collective, we may have. So I'd like to, to add a few questions to that to be answered. And I'm, I'm in one to support this benchmark or checkpoint or whatever you call it, that would be the next stage. I, I seriously don't, i- if we are not satisfied by those questions and any others we have, why would we want to hire and have expenses not only by the city, but also by our developers who have already invested quite a bit of money? Now, if we get back to that checkpoint and we as a council decide to move one forward, then I'm willing to throw, at that point, I'm willing to throw resources at that to, to ensure we give it the best possible deal. The functionality, all those issues that we're talking about because we can't work with two developers towards that development contract, I don't think. Cause ultimately we're gonna want to say, well, we'd like the functionality to look this way on that site and we'd like the functionality to look a little like that on this site. We just can't function in that parallel and I think we'd drive up the cost and not do anybody a favor some. And for us getting to a checkpoint or a benchmark at the point where you get your questions and, and the collective from the council, then, um, then we can decide on, um, if we're gonna go with, maybe at that point, we decide if we're gonna go with one, two, or no developers.
Bob?
I, I agree with both the gentlemen. The, uh, in my mind, we, we have one developer that has put, clearly put a lot of resources into a proposal. Now, you can argue whether that's the best proposal or not. At this point, it's, it's really the only complete proposal. And I am not in favor of subsidizing or financing the, the other proposal to get it to the point that it's, can be compared to, to the first proposal. And, and that's what it almost sounds to me like that we're doing is that we're, we're wanting to hire a consultant and we're wanting to put forth a stipend to subsidize the process of getting to the point where we can evaluate the two proposals. Cause right now the two do not equate. And I think until, I, I mean, the, the city should be willing to, to do whatever it can to help in negotiations with the state or whatever. But in terms of getting that proposal to a point where it can be evaluated and compared, that's on the developer. That's not on the city. And, and I won't vote for money to get that developer's proposal on par with the other proposal. That, that's on them.
Bob, or-
Pardon me?
Drew, I just wanna, I wanna come to a, a point here on, on at least one subject if we could, if the council will entertain this. What's your feeling now on a consultant? At least from what you've heard tonight. And so the audience knows, in a work session, we normally have much, much open debate and open conversation, just like we've had tonight. And then at that point in time, staff, like as, as I said earlier, uh, will kind of say, well, now that we've heard that, this is kind of what we want to do. Um, what would you, is there anything you want us to do as far as a consultant? Cause then I'm gonna move down the list.
Well, I kind of like, uh, some closure or direct instruction. What I'm gathering is there's maybe a majority that would just simply like to wait on, uh, on doing anything with a consultant for now. So you could simply do a motion to not move forward with a consultant at this time. Maybe if I could, to, I see two other things too. Perhaps Councilman Halavich's concept might be best served with a resolution setting out some dates or whatever y'all's expectation are. And then the third, cause obviously each council member has their own ideas and, and to get a consensus is, is difficult without something in front of you to, to work with. Third thing is, uh, if you recall on those list of questions, there, there's certainly different timing on those things. You know, for, or it's for example, you know, we need to know about their TIF and get some economic numbers. So how much they can generate from economic incentives, you know, from the mall side. I've asked them about, you know, reducing the value of a, or considering reducing the super TIF and such like that. So some of those things are not exactly time sensitive. They're things to be working on. Uh, and really, you know, I think ultimately the only way to get everybody's questions answered is to play it out to the end and have that final apples to apples, contract to contract where you can get all those answers in. Now, if the council does the, the, kind of the benchmarks, that's, I mean, I'm not, certainly not opposed to that. But, uh, you'll still, you'll always probably have some unanswered questions until we get to that very end finish line. And as Councilman Halavich said, it's very difficult to move forward with two, but we'll do that if that's the council's wishes are.
Rick, can you explain to me please the, um, what you're thinking about as far as this timeline? And how that might affect if we went out for an RFP for a consultant? Or are we just gonna want to wait till January or February, March and to do that? But I guess your benchmarks, and we haven't had a chance to talk about this personally, so I appreciate you sharing it off the cuff.
I'd say we would, um, by January seventh or four, January fourteenth, we should have enough time to, to look at the economic issues regarding the RFP, the cost of the city, the functionality of the facility at a very basic level and get the questions answered by the council that maybe you can solicit from us. And then by that ta, time, uh, we would put it on the calendar to, to move both forward, one forward or none forward. I mean, this would be, at the, at that time, we would, I'm still in favor of us only choosing one developer to move forward on. If we're gonna expend attorney dollars and, and get the best deal we can possibly get, I would prefer to have only work with one, uh, one developer. That's my proposal.
I understand and appreciate that, Rick. I just have a question for Drew. It almost seems to me that we're right where we were the last time we left here. Is that about right, guys? I mean, I, I guess this is one of those public moments that some people don't always want to share. But guys, we have to make a decision on what we want to do and which way we want to go next. The developers are obviously trying to work on this behind the scenes. I mean, I'm not thumping for one way or the other, but I think that, uh, making a decision on some of this or at least telling staff, you know, down the road, we want to see an RFP or whatever on a consultant, whatever it might be. I think we need to give staff some direction tonight. Bob?
The only, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, I guess, if I understood you correctly, I was thinking the same thing you are. Essentially what we're doing is we've just extended the Phase Two is what we're, is what we're sitting here doing tonight. We're, we're saying, okay, Developer B, you, you, uh, didn't get your information to us and we still want to give you an opportunity to do that, so we're going to give you more time. We're gonna go out to January fifteenth now, or we're gonna go to some future date. And, and I guess my question for Drew is, do you think that going through the negotiating process on a contract is the equivalent of, of, or do you think you're finally going to draw out of Developer B their, uh, their proposal? Because I can't see that, that we've gotten one yet. And, and so I guess the council's already made their decision, or we've already made our decision to move both of them forward. That's what we did. And, uh, you know, maybe, maybe the right approach is turn it over to the lawyer and let him get an agreement.
That is always the right answer.
Pardon me?
That's, that's true. I knew that.
Turn it over to lawyers.
Right. But I mean, that's, that's really what-
And his assistant would agree.
That's what they're proposing is that we turn it over to you and you'll, you're agreeing that you will finally get a proposal from this, uh, developer.
But I think what we have to do, Bob, is give him the right, I think we need to give him and staff the right tools in order to do that. Sean?
I think there is some concern and some criti, criticism, um, or maybe a, a lack of communication with one developer that didn't feel like we as a, a council fully explored opportunities with the state. Therefore, they could not give us their best and final. I took the vote the other night as an opportunity for us to explore those opportunities with the state. So they can give us their best and final. And at that point, then I think we could make a decision.
Drew, do you want to give them an update on that?
Sure. We did have a, a meeting last week. It was, I, I considered it very productive and positive. Uh, and we should be scheduling another meeting this week, uh, although it's starting to wear away, so maybe it'll be the next week. But, uh, we've got some general ideas. Staff's working pretty hard on some concepts and, uh, uh, we're moving forward with that forthwith.
Rick? I'm sorry, Sean, where are you down?
Uh, I, I agree exactly. That was my thought in that we never did get our apples to apples and we didn't, weren't able to get that without a nod. Our, our nod was significant the other day. It, it promoted, it gave the, the downtown developer, um, the motive, motive to hire a developer and to start filling in the blanks. That wouldn't have happened without our vote. And secondly, we started talking to the state. So we, we've made, uh, turned, put the wheels into motion. But I'll go back to what, uh, Drew said. We've never looked at apples to apples. And, and that's kind of what I was looking for, for, uh, before I can, uh, expended a lot of money on developer contracts. But our goal, I kind of put this down on my sheet of paper here, is a development contract is our goal. And that was with one person. So let's, let's keep our eye on that prize. And I think we're moving forward, even though it seems like we're kind of moved back and in the same position.
So you agree we are kind of in the same spot as a few weeks ago? Ralph?
Uh, Drew, to give you some feedback, I, I agree with these comments. I, I think it's good to be thinking about these things and good to, for you to bring it to our attention and for us to have this discussion. But I think it's premature, I, I think it's premature to act on these things tonight until, uh, I'd like to learn more about the parking situation and the land availability situation before I'm prepared to spend any additional public money on these particular items.
Drew?
Well, reading the tea le, tea leaves, perhaps we could, uh, schedule a work session in January and I can bring you up to date on everything I know at that time.
Or sooner, if we find out more about land, we could do it next week.
Oh, absolutely. Any individual things that come up.
From what I'm hearing, if that's the, if that's kind of the general feel that the council would like to get some finalization or at least a pretty good idea on, on what our true cost or trade cost or whatever it might be with the state, I'd tell you what, I, I think Drew and I hear you and as soon as we find that out, we'll have a, we can have a work session probably yet this month to go over that. I know it's something everyone wants to know. Bob?
You know, the only thing that bothers me about the conversation about the parking and about the land is that even once that's resolved, unless the parking resolution entails some kind of, uh, revenue source from the state that's going to help plug the gap. The thing that's always left out of the conversation, because we always get hung up on the land and the parking, which, which I've tried to say to individuals, let's just pretend that that's resolved. And then let's move on to the real elephant in the room, which is how are they gonna generate enough revenue with a TIF to make that happen? We never get to the point of discussing that. And you can resolve the parking issue, you can resolve the land issue. And if you don't come up with a way to finance it through a TIF, it all falls apart.
And I, and I think there's another, not, I don't mean to interrupt, but while I have this on my mind. And there again, you have to forgive me, it's a little bit different style than I'm used to up here. Another thing we're forgetting about too is, isn't there something to do with Capital Plaza in, in one of those development? Or can you, can you explain to whoever's watching out there now and whoever's here that, what that is and what, is there agreement there?
Sure. Part of the Airhearts' proposal was a cooperative partnership with, uh, Capital Plaza. I mean, ultimately, when we bring you back the agreement, it'll either, there'll either have to be a, uh, an agreement with it or, you know, a revision of that plan to say they're, you know, they're not gonna have that direct partnership and they'll solve that case in some other way. To Councilman Scrivener's point, uh, on the parking garage itself, Matt and Britt and I would agree or we're trying to figure out some creative solutions to that. And we think we're, we're coming up with some possibilities, you know?
Well, a, and I agree. I mean, I'm, I just think that I'd like to see the developer give us some, um, idea about how they're gonna generate revenue to retire bonds. I presume that they'll either borrow money or, or finance it in some way. And they're going to, they've already indicated that they're gonna need some kind of a revenue source in order to, to finance that. But yet they've just kind of thrown out suggestions that, well, we, we might use this, we might use this. I'd like for them to come up with a indication of, of what they're, they project revenues to be, what they project incremental revenues to be and what they expect the, the growth to be. So they can, uh, give us an idea of what kind of TIF they expect to, uh, generate. Because if it all falls apart unless that can be solved and no one addresses that, they all want to talk about parking and land acquisition. They don't want to talk about how you, uh, close the gap. And to me, that's, that's what it all hinges on.
That's absolutely correct. I will say they've taken what I consider an excellent step forward in hiring the attorney they've hired because he is in that business of, uh, in fact, he works for a number of cities on their economic development. So I think they've, you know, certainly I think maybe we all wish they would have done that three or four months ago, but they've taken that big step now. So I think you'll see some good results going forward.
Thank you, Drew. Rick?
I just want to add one thing to Bob's, uh, point there is, I, I agree, we should try to get that information. But I, I really don't want to put any more, many more money out to expend more money for them to get where they need to be. I'd like to see them get to that point first and then we can talk.
And I'm, I'm assuming, Rick, is that what you mean by your, about your dates and the, I forget exactly what you were calling it? What, what would you call, checkpoint, you know, whatever? Is that how you see that, Drew? And I'm assuming as Bob was saying, um, a lot of those questions are questions that he already has out to them now. Is that correct, Drew?
Uh, yeah, I think those, some of those questions-
Questions that, that, uh, we've received.
Well, what say I, uh, report back to you in January?
Or sooner.
Or sooner. If, certainly if anything comes up, but at least in January to let you know where we're at with all those questions.
As timely issues come up, there's no need to wait to January.
No, I, absolutely not. It's just a full discussion.
We have a whole community kind of waiting. Mr. Carlos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as relates to a consultant, and this is why I think that a work session may certainly come in, uh, come in handy. Uh, would this be the final consultant that we go with or was there another consultant after this consultant? I mean-
God willing, this will be the last consultant. I think this is the final one.
That just made the paper.
So, so our RFP most definitely needs to be well thought out. And I think that it has to be, it should be a work session in which we all can come together and say what we want this final, uh, RFP to look like for this consultant, if that's what we do. Cause what I don't want to do is to go back down the same road again to say, oh, now I'm gonna need another consultant again. So I think that a work session most definitely needs to be, uh, put, uh, put together. And we need to come to, uh, the table with, with our thoughts and where we want to be at. So that's just my thought.
We can certainly do that if that's what the council wants to do, uh-
I would, I, I would ask the council, it wouldn't necessarily vote, but does anyone have a problem if, if Drew starts an RFP process, not a process, but at least the RFP, the wording of an RFP? Is that what you're trying to say, Carlos, basically?
Yeah, we can get you a draft and you all can, we can get you a draft and then we can, you all can mold it over and we can have a work session. We can get you a draft and then we can, you all can mold over and we can have a work session, talk about it.
Why don't you, uh, unless the council has a problem, I know a lot of people have said that's something that they want to see in a work session. Why don't you get that draft together and, um, we'll see what scheduling does with the state and whatnot, but we may still try to look at that yet this month. Is that good to go, guys, on consultant? All right. Thank you for your time. Bob, thank you for your time. Next, uh, stipend, do we need to talk about that more? Where are we at there, guys?
Uh, well, is it, is it, I, I don't think you need to move forward with that right now.
Okay. And I'm assuming you don't get another attorney till-
Probably not.
Okay. Uh, with that, guys, uh, let's take a eight-minute recess and we'll come right back. That finishes up the conference center part.